Calling to order, regular council meeting Tuesday, May twenty first, two thousand nineteen, the time is six thirty two.
Six thirty one.
Six thirty one. Dr. Guy, can you call it up, please?
Council Austin.
Present.
Council Martin.
Present.
Council Garrison, Council Smith.
Present.
Council Warren.
Present.
I have no representation from the legislature today.
Hey, remarks to public on agenda items in minutes.
I have some questions in reference to what is twenty three nineteen. To me, it's ambiguous. I don't quite understand it. Maybe perhaps you can help me. An ordinance to amend the East Cleveland Fire Prevention Code, section fifteen oh one dash seventeen eight, fifteen oh one seventeen two, and fifteen oh one seventeen three, permit license and fees to comply with the annual fire prevention license application letter of the East Cleveland Fire Department requested by the Fire Chief. So, what uh, application letter of the East Cleveland Fire Department? I, I, it just doesn't make sense to me. What are you saying here as to what license and what uh, uh, application letter of the East Cleveland Fire Department if you are concerned about what you're doing there? And number two, an ordinance twenty six nineteen, notice changing, ordinance of changing the name of what, what we're looking at. I understand that. Uh, I, I'd like to, this one has a little more clarity to it as far as uh, the change in Forest Hills to Forest Hill. And I think the same should be in this uh, ordinance here of twenty, twenty three, twenty three nineteen. It should be what you're changing from two. And that's not in there, so I don't know who offered your legislation there.
Minutes to be approved. We have May second, two thousand nineteen agenda review. Can I get a motion for those minutes to be approved?
I move that the May second agenda review means for twenty nineteen be approved, second.
Council Austin.
Yay.
Council Martin.
Yes. Yeah, 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 yeah.
Council Warren.
Yeah.
The May second, two thousand nineteen agenda review is approved. I also add May seventh.
Hey, so can I get a motion to adjourn the agenda for add May seventh regular council meeting?
I move that we may need to add May seventh, twenty eighteen, regular council meeting minutes. What do you say, O'Malley?
Just there in the fact that they're available, it's not what you're gonna do.
Second.
Council Smith. I'm sorry, Council Austin.
Yay.
Council Martin.
Yay.
Council Smith.
Yay.
Council Warren.
Yeah.
And May seventh, regular council, minute thirty two.
No, added to the agenda.
I'm sorry, added to the agenda.
So now can I get a motion for May seventh, regular council meeting minutes to be approved?
I move that the May seventh, regular council meetings, minutes be approved, second.
Council Austin.
Yay.
Council Martin.
Yay.
Council Smith.
Yay.
Council Warren.
Yeah.
And May seventh, regular council approved. May ninth, two thousand nineteen, contracts and property, can I get a motion for those meetings minutes to be approved?
I move that the May ninth, twenty nineteen, contracts and property meeting be approved, second.
Council Austin.
Yay.
Council Warren.
Yay.
Council Smith.
Yay.
Yeah. May ninth, contracts and property approved. Motion for May fourteenth, two thousand nineteen, health and safety.
I move that the May fourteenth, twenty nineteen, health and safety committee minutes be approved, second.
And Council Austin.
Yeah.
Council Austin Martin.
Yay.
Council Smith.
Yay.
Council Warren.
Yeah.
May fourteenth, health and safety, please.
May fourteenth, May fourteenth, two thousand nineteen, finance committee minutes. Make a motion.
Make a motion that May fourteenth, twenty nineteen, finance committee minutes be approved. Second.
Council Austin.
Yeah.
Council Martin.
Yay.
Council Smith.
Yay.
Council Warren.
Yeah.
May fourteenth, finance, two thousand nineteen.
Hey, Dr. Guy, we do have a representative from the mayor's office, the administration's, who are here. Hey, but so we have reports and announcements from Mayor Brandon L King. Do you have any reports or announcements?
Uh, I guess in regards to Third Avenue, I guess um, the water department was asked to pay, repave the street because it was alleged that they had damaged the, the street while they were doing construction. And while they acknowledged that they weren't supposed to be using that street. They're claiming that they only used it two or three times, that it wasn't enough, that they stopped immediately once they were notified that they weren't supposed to be on the street. So they don't believe that the damage that's on the street is due to their trucks. So at this point, they're declining to pay.
You talking about the Northeast Ohio Sewer District?
Yes.
They declined it to repave what street?
Third Avenue. Well, they're not saying that there's no damage. They're just saying that they're not the ones responsible for it. They're saying they used the street, but not enough time, so not enough trucks used it to have caused the damage on the street. That's their answer.
Any other, any other announcements? Under the mayor's office?
Wind Speed Broadband, thirteen ninety five Haken Avenue, East Cleveland, Ohio, four four one one two. May tenth, twenty nineteen, Brandon L King, mayor, city of East Cleveland, one forty three forty Euclid Avenue, East Cleveland, Ohio. Notice, video server provider, Wind Speed Broadband LLC. Dear, dear Mayor King, this letter is to notify the city of East Cleveland that Wind Speed Broadband LLC has been granted the opportunity to be a video server provider for customers within the boundaries of the city of East Cleveland. Our video service authorization is issued by the Director of the Ohio Department of Commerce is identified as twenty nineteen dash B S A dash zero zero nine one and has an effective, effective date of May ninth, twenty nineteen. We are pleased to offer cable television and high-speed internet services to locations within the city of East Cleveland. Upon completion of the upcoming sale and asset transfer, Wind Speed Broadband will be the new operator of the high-grade fiber Cox broadband network previously owned by East Cleveland Cable. Pursuant to the terms and conditions of the authorization, the city of East Cleveland is advised to review Ohio Revised Code, sections one three three two dash two one through one three three two dash three four to determine its rights and responsibilities. Please contact me anytime since you have further questions or comments. Best regards, William B Bauer, Wind Speed Broadband, President and CEO. Also have a, a phone number. Any, any of our present residents want to take the phone number down? Here it goes, three zero eight, four three six, four six five zero. Also an email, b o at intertech dot net.
Are there any updates as far as the MLK proposal, right, or?
Just a reminder that it's um, on Monday, and they're gonna start the lineup at RTA and Slum Liberty. I think we were blessed.
That's a shot.
Actually started um, that little, people don't talk a lot, when we walk down, down the shore and now we're.
And then it will actually end at Neela?
I think we did, we did, Helen, that's well.
Helen, that's right, I missed it.
Helen, that's right, so yeah, that would be Neela. Neela Avenue, okay. All right, let's. So that's a year of reports from council committees. We have general services, councilman Austin.
Um, we do not have a call for general services. I do have notes. I'll share those notes at the end. Thank you.
Next meeting will be June twenty fifth at five thirty P M. Personnel appointments next meeting is Tuesday, May twenty eighth, twenty eighth at six thirty P M. Uh, contracts and property, which I chair, will be June sixth at six thirty P M. Councilman Martin, health and safety.
Yes. Good evening. Health and safety met May fourteenth, and I just go with general, we talked about the special purpose grant. Special purpose grant thirty three, it goes back to nineteen ninety four, ten year over twenty plus years. It's a special purpose grant to employ single mothers, to train them for employment. It's been through Greenport Mayor's, and I had it come up because it's time for us to spend the money. Originally, the grant was for two million dollars under Ottawa, when Ottawa was mayor. And all it spent was the three hundred and twenty thousand to train mothers for employment. So the administration is going to move forward. Uh, I'll read this briefly, says that uh, discussion about the special purpose grant was summarized by Michael Smith, and he noted that the mayor and the administration are in discussion about what their next steps will be to expend the monies and have been seeing for over twenty years. They're looking for a request for proposal process and have reviewed team, which will make the final recommendation to the mayor once they have everything in place. Also during that meeting, Chief Mike Salika presented legislation, which wanted the citizen to ask a question about. Uh, ordinance twenty three dash nineteen, which requested to be added. Requested for the amendment to the current prevention fire codes, which have on the books, which have been on the books since nineteen seventy. Essentially, the request is for a fee increase from now fifty to a hundred dollars for permits and licensing to comply with the annual fire prevention license application letter. Buildings that have more than one address, and this is key caveat in that, buildings that have more than one address have only paid fifty dollars. Now the, the request is to charge each address one hundred per, per building or address. These fees will go toward, these fees will go toward needed equipment and training that fires seem to request. Currently, the department is losing money. This increase will assist in balancing expenses. Chief of Fire, Michael Salika, discussed this a couple of times. He's not here tonight. I, I want him to be here. I also have a letter uh, from Salika.
He was here Thursday.
He was here Thursday. You wanna say anything in reference to this too?
Well, he um, I'll read some things.
Okay.
So, reasons for the fire prevention license increase. To help offset the funding from the general fund to hire a part-time fire prevention officer due to the amount of training and call volume of the fire department, along with other mandated tasks for the fire officers and fire, firefighters, the department is averaging about sixty-six to seventy-five percent on yearly inspection. This will be addressed. Funds will also help offset administrative fees associated with fire prevention inspections, internet connection for mobile devices needed to streamline and ensure clean and detailed progress. All re-inspections are free at this point. If this increase doesn't get approved, we will be forced to charge for any re-inspections up to fifty dollars per re-inspection, plus any fines associated with the inspection. Um, vacant buildings that are still required yearly inspections create negative reimbursement back to the service. This will aid in closing the gap. Added funds will also be used to train firefighters to become certified fire safety inspectors and help with continuing education requirements for those that are already certified. Every five years, it's mandatory, or when the fire chief calls for its insurance service office, they evaluate the fire department and its productivity. Once the evaluation is completed, the department is ranked one through ten, one being the best and ten the worst. This evaluation can be overlooked at, can be then looked at any insurance company, and they can use this evaluation to set the monthly premiums of a building or business owner's rate. Currently, we are at a four. When I took office, we were at a five. With dispatch soon to be with C C E com, we should be at a three. By adding a fire prevention officer and ensuring a hundred percent inspection and education, we should become a two in the I S L rating. By lowering the rating for the fire department, that can equal a decrease in our building and business owners' insurance rates by as much as twenty percent per month. So, that's the reason for it, I hope that answers your question.
Yes.
No, I didn't mean for your time.
And we have a breakdown, uh, we won't get into all the details. So he came out and we asked questions. I think the, the body of council were, were pretty pleased with, with it is, is needed. We haven't done anything since nineteen seventy. The last part of my report is, uh, I need to announce, and we have a proclamation for Ray Allen, who worked in the service department for over twenty years, a mechanic, a, a good guy. And uh, thank Kevin Erby for bringing that to attention, because we didn't know. Also, uh, Kevin asked a question about the uh, uh, the Northeast Ohio Sewer District, leaving unpaid. We talked about that briefly, which uh, we were told by the mayor that the Northeast Ohio Sewer District would survey the roads every Friday. So, uh, I hope they do that, but I concern, you said that, okay. I concern, thank you, Austin, was, when you drive down Euclid, for example, and you cross the dirt, you can't tell what's under there, right? We wanted them to put metal plates. Now, when I came here, just got here a few minutes ago, the metal plates are down.
I believe they stated that because they're still working, it's um, putting the metal plates. They're still working in those areas that they haven't completely paved, so they still may have to dig it up eventually, depending. So if they put the metal plates down, but it asks additional time, that's what I believe the mayor said the last time, correct? So that's the rationale. I mean, whether we agree with it or not, that's what the sewer district stated.
Well, uh, the good news is that uh, it's projected by July of this year that that bottleneck of the Supreme Euclid will be taken care of. That's one good thing. And begin the next year, will be, Euclid Avenue will be, be paved, all of Euclid Avenue from going east and Lakeview going all the way to Island Hill. So, we had that done over ten years ago. Is that correct? All right, more than that. More than ten years ago. So, uh, that's, I think that covers basically everything you say for health and safety. Uh, I do wanna say that it is time, and this council agrees with this, that we get this three hundred and twenty thousand dollars spent, it's been sitting there since nineteen, uh, nineteen ninety four. And it's to train single mothers. We did, it was tried a few years ago to see if they could use the money for something else. But no, it's, it's, it's lost. That's how the money's supposed to be used. The money, last time we checked, we did some thorough thing through Marshall Fudge Office, the money's still there. So, uh, Michael talked about a proposal, and that he will let us know when he put the thing in the paper and all like that.
Who's Michael?
Michael Smith. Right.
Well, according to when I actually read the special purpose grant, and I think we're under the illusion that it's just for females, because it's underemployed males and females.
Oh, okay.
That's why the special purpose grant, so.
Right. Well, thank you, thank you. I, I thought it was single mothers, uh, I, I made a note, let me see.
Okay, we're not gonna. We can do provide it, and you can actually look it up, and I'll try and find a link for it, so we can provide it.
We'll, we'll follow up. I'll do, I will read this.
Okay.
I, I will read this section from it that I took out, that was, it's a training program for single mothers to enable them to become economically self-sufficient, going right back to January nineteen ninety. Okay. Madam President, that concludes health and safety.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, I forgot to say something.
Okay.
Uh, the next health and safety, are you listening, brother? It's June eleventh, five thirty. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Madam President.
Thank you, Madam President. Finance committee met briefly on May fourteenth to discuss ordinance number twenty five nineteen, um, same ordinance that we will be discussing tonight, Forest Hill, uh, name change. After that, I have to, I have to, uh, had an emergency. So because of that, we rescheduled a special finance meeting on May twenty third, because I didn't discuss with the people everything that I wanted to discuss, and I didn't wanna wait until next month to have another finance committee meeting. So please join us on uh, May twenty third at five thirty. We'll be discussing the state audit, Ohio Public Employees Retirement Audit, the April ninth, the April twenty nineteen uh, financial report, which we in May now, so we'll be discussing, discussing the May twenty nineteen financial report. Uh, we'll be discussing things of that nature. Also, we'll be discussing our finance situations such as our cops quarterly grants the city has received, its first quarter reimbursement in April. We'll be discussing situations as the city came to agreement with Kaiser, which is now Healthspan, remember that, Councilman Martin? To settle an outstanding payable of uh, twenty-two thou, two hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. The city also paid a hundred fifty thousand dollar lawsuit in February. We'll be, we discuss things such as, uh, currently the service department and central services have gone over their expenditures appropriated due to uh, trees getting cut and due to trees getting trimmed at Forest Hill Park. But we are inside of our total number of funded, we are the total number funded. We are within our estimated resources. As many of you know, at the end of the year, certain allocations will be re-appropriated, and we'll, and we will reconcile all departments within end of the year. A lot of you also know that the city has other pending lawsuits. We've uh, discussed that. We'll be discussing the John Deere e, equipment that I can't say our, our mayor fought uh, for with the fiscal commission. Martin Luther King situation, according to, to the, to the fiscal commission is in, in Columbus, so they, they are discussing that, Councilman Martin. The total cost of the floor is now up to three hundred thousand dollars. Also, we'll be uh, discussing uh, grant opportunities from the Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District. We live of uh, grant opportunities. So again, please join us. I encourage, as always, I encourage you to attend the committee meetings. They are very, very important, uh, just as important as the regular council meeting tonight. So again, uh, May twenty third at five thirty, finance committee meeting. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. All right, the next agenda review meeting will be Thursday, May thirtieth at six thirty P M. And regular council will be Tuesday, June fourth, six thirty P M. And you can also go on the website and download or get a copy of the, the committee meeting. So a lot of the legislation that we are voting on, on the regular council, is legislation that we thoroughly, or we try to thoroughly go through at committees at each subsequent agenda review. So, just wanna make you aware of that. So next we have proclamation for Joseph B Martin and Ray S Allen Senior, Councilman Martin.
Yes. Joseph B Martin was my brother, my oldest brother. He stayed right down the street here, been there for years. Uh, I'll just read briefly to the point. We had the service two Fridays ago. Joseph B Martin was born February sixteen, nineteen fifty, to loving parents. Joseph B Martin was deceased, and M G, that's my mom. And our younger brother died a year ago, and I only, so I got one brother left. Where Joseph, Joseph Martin deeply loved his family. He was the eldest of his brothers. The Lord died a year ago, dangerous ones to lie to myself. Joseph Martin was born and raised in Cleveland Highway, attended Johnny High School, and participated in a number of sports programs. He later joined U S Armed Forces, was a member of the one-on-one airborne division, where they were there at the service. Uh, he'd get the flag and everything. Joseph B Martin returned home to work at the Veterans Hospital, was an active member of the veteran group. He followed enjoying and gardening, working on cars, music, and dancing. Joseph B Martin loved the family, and that is where he departed peacefully and swiftly at home. My, uh, on Mondays, we put the garbage out in this area, and Joseph always put the garbage out. So my mom uh, noticed that the garbage wasn't out, and she came down and shook it, and he was gone. He, he went peacefully. So God be with him as he goes to uh, those golden shores that we sit in a fraternity. Ray Allen, nineteen fifty-six, he was preceded and dead by his mother Bernice Dixon, his daughter Rachel Allen, his brothers Vernon Dixon and Sherman Dixon. And Ray S Allen Senior dedicated his service to East Cleveland, working in the major department for over twenty years. He was a jack of all trades, handyman, a certified mechanic, and also licensed C E O of a drive. He fixed all the trucks and stuff when they broke down. Ray Allen Senior enjoyed his family. He met Janice Lillard, and to this year, his children Stephanie and Ray Stephen Junior was born. He also leads to mourn his children Stevie Williams, Kim Yada Williams, Ken Yate Williams, Amika Taylor, and the host of grandchildren. Ray Allen Senior loved to help others. He enjoyed race cars, motorcycle, and going on a race trip. So God be with the Ray Allen family, and thank you guys for the proclamation.
Next we have legislation. Now, ordinance number twenty three nineteen, it doesn't show. It's a first rate, or is it an emergency?
We can amend it to emergency.
I believe it's already an emergency.
Is it?
But yeah, we'll go ahead and technically do it, so it's not listed on the agenda. So do you like to put that, do you like to make that motion?
Legislation, not a first rate.
It's not. Well, it's, it's, it's the range of fees, and it's not necessarily emergency. So they keep the piece looking to the first rate, and you can do that, okay.
Okay. Order number twenty three nineteen is wanting to amend the East Cleveland Fire Prevention Code, such as fifteen oh one point one seven eight, fifteen oh one point one seventeen, fifteen oh one point one seven three, and add.
That we could hear.
And add fifteen oh one point one seven three. Permits, licenses, and fees implied with the annual fire prevention license application letter of the East Cleveland Fire Department requested by fire chief, sponsored by Mr. Daniel Martin, Councilor Large, Council Garrison, and Council, Council Timothy Austin.
Well, it's a first rate. I, I'll add, I would like to thank the president for reading the comprehensive letter we got from Mike Salika. We had him out twice in the last couple of weeks. So I think the council's in favor of it. You won't be here long, man.
Change of ordinance number twenty six, there's nineteen, it will look, a number change for the, um, it's an ordinance to change in name of Forest Hills Boulevard, before Skills Boulevard, pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, seven two three point oh four. Change in name, vacating or narrowing streets on petition, requested by Vice President Ernest Smith. requested by Vice President Ernest Smith, sponsored by Gillian Graham, Council President, Councilor Jake Addison, and Councilor Timothy Austin.
Councilman Martin, your name is not on here, do you support this legislation?
Uh, I don't know much about it, I did, I did want to ask a question, I'm not a court, I'm seeing it said change the name from Forest Hill Boulevard to Forest Hill Boulevard, is there a change there?
Only difference is that, so let me, let me tell you, because I was wondering about it too. I was thinking that what we can do is have it sponsored as council as a whole, and the reason being is that, okay, so the chief of, the fire basically said it can make a difference.
Okay.
Okay, so they get a call, they hear Forest Hills versus Forest Hill, they may look at Forest Hills that there's an avenue that goes terrace, and then there's Forest Hills that goes up. So if things are uniformed, then it's easier for them. Also, applications and grants and neighborhood connections and things like that, because certain things say Forest Hills and certain things say Forest Hills. So we want it uniform, so the residents are there, so that's one of the reasons, um.
I, I'm for it, and Smith, that's something you would, I know it's good stuff, right?
That's an honor, I, I appreciate that, that's an honor. Also, um, the people, when I, when I read in, uh, that letter again, as I did the other day, the finance committee meeting reading it to the record, this is from Frank Riggie, President of the East Cleveland Forest Hill Neighborhood Association. This is a request to change the name of Forest Hills Boulevard to Forest Hill Boulevard. The main reason for our request is to name the road after the community, which seems to be standard practice. The correct name of our community is Forest Hill, although some have erroneously used Forest Hills. By having the name of the road the same as the community, there is less chance for any confusion. Also, we are in the process of installing new historic street signs in the neighborhoods and would like to have this change approved beforehand. Also, the request could be reviewed as more of a clarification than a name change. Currently, both Forest Hill and Forest Hills names are used on current signs. At Newberry Drive, a sign reads Forest Hill Boulevard, and warden, it is Forest Hills Boulevard. Thank you for reviewing our requests.
So, um, I would propose that if all councils in favor, that we have it, um, sponsored, uh, council as a whole, instead of individually.
That's fine with me. Oh, I agree.
Yes, certainly, I'm, I'd be opposed to that.
So that's a first rate.
Mm-hmm.
Anything else, Councilman Austin?
I'm outside, no matter.
Okay. So our marks are requested for the three.
Good evening, everyone.
Evening.
My name is Joyce McFoley, my first time, uh, person here.
What's your last name, Joyce?
McFoley, M C.
M C.
O.
F O.
L L E Y. I live in Nittany Crest Luxury Apartment, AKA The Dump, now that's a dump, but let me tell you.
I thought you said it was luxury apartment.
Oh, oh. What I come to complain about is on the twenty-ninth of last month, you probably got a quick claim deed. It's been done like, like that ten times, from ninety-seven, seventy-five, up until two thousand nineteen. Which we, the tenants, got nothing from the previous owner, which is Fox Metal Property that was, that used to own it. Now it's G I L H. This was the previous owner, Fox Metal Property, which gave a quick deed to G I L H. But he never gave the tenant, the previous tenant that's there, nothing to write and saying he was selling the building or giving a quick deed. So therefore, he violated all the tenant rights. So when I go in the office, they got the, on April four day, that's when they came into play. They called me, they said, "You gonna pay your rent?", I said, "Who are you?", "Well, we the new owners", I said, "Honey, I'm not gonna pay you that, I don't know you." I said, "You never gave me nothing to write, the previous owner never gave us nothing to write, saying he was selling and they're gonna be new owners as of April the first." So as of yet, I haven't gave my money, which I refused to. So I received this with a nine-boy, a three-day eviction notice from the new people who, like I said, I still don't know. So, I, and then I got this because of this, this is how they do business around here. See, imagine my, my grandbaby could have wrote that. This, they were the pest control to come here and told, "Why are you in Fox Metal Property there? I never let them come here because I'm not dirty like that, so I don't need them." But the pest control man that sprayed the building said, "Well, she said, "You know that a man ain't gonna bit you", I said, "You know when you go back and tell her, "Do it, I don't care." And that's how this eviction notice came into play. So this was on the tenth, that was Monday, that was on the Friday, so Saturday and Sunday don't, you know, so I suppose it been out late than Wednesday or Thursday, but you have a five-day grace period in between. So I tried to tell them, I come back Friday on the seventeenth, she'd, she'd have put locks on the door, I can't get in the building. But remember, I don't have a court date for this eviction, I have no court date, no court date. So I come up here and I try to talk to people.
Did you try to talk to the mayor?
Okay.
I went to the police, they probably got cussed out trying to put in a complaint against this. I, I ain't never, your police department is just a rage. Every time we call them over at Nittany Crest, we get cussed out, threatening to get in jail and stuff. I'm sixty-one years old, I ain't got no bill to climb a little window to get in the property while, while I live. You know, but, uh, somebody got to come over and investigate that.
Okay, uh, Ms., Ms. Paul, did you go to the tenant, or did you try them, the tenant association?
Oh, honey, I took legal action.
Okay.
I got legal on my side, honey.
But you need to check your police department. Woo. Counsel, Captain Mary one forty-eight oh two M.
No, I just want to know what's going on, too. They know they police.
I'm sorry, Ms. Paul.
I have problems with this department too.
Okay.
One thirty, they were called to one forty-eight oh two M due to the fact, uh, previously I had a, what, what was it?
The solicitor for the interview.
Solicitors for, for an interview company, just like I said about the problems we had before. They knock on your door, ask you to change, you end up losing. Today was totally different. Young man came to my door, had a folder, his, his program of how he wanted to switch us from community into, uh, public energy. It was, it got to a point where I asked him to leave my porch. I called these police, come and get him off my porch. He did, no, there was no response, it was from one thirty, one thirty-nine was the phone call. I still haven't seen an officer, the man ended up getting chased off my porch. Uh, I don't like that disrespect. So if our police chief doesn't want to send his peoples out to protect and serve, then he needs to be removed. Uh, now, I'm gonna talk about health and safety. If, if our council don't understand health and safety means, we can't take it anymore. We're putting our, our families, our elders, our children. Suppose this young man wanted me to come out my door. He couldn't, want me to come out my door, come outside and talk to him. If I leave my dwelling and get attacked and there's no police officer on his way to my residence, it's me and that person. And, and, and I say this with, with utmost respect, I don't want to take a young man out. I won't take him out. So if I call for our police force to show up and they don't, that's your fault.
How can I fault?
Due to the fact that I made the, the, the phone, the phone call to say, "Leave my property", yes, the sign on my house says, "No trespassing", you have no right coming on my property and it says, "No trespassing". I asked you to stay off of my property, that means don't come on, period, period. There's no other, other explanation you need. Uh, contractors taking over the city, that's another health and safety problem. And then my councilors at large, your job is to, to make sure that vehicles don't get tore up. Your job is as a, a counselor at large is to talk to these contractors and tell them that plates go down, they don't do it any other place else, but it's Cleveland. If y'all don't speak now, you never will. And maybe we need to go back to the point where we told y'all, can't do the job, we'll replace you or voluntarily yourself leave. It's disrespectful for us to drive over chuck holes, our kids die in public, there is not even a street sweeper to pick up the rubbish. So you tell me that's fair for us in East Cleveland? They don't do it anywhere else, and in Barma, Cleveland Heights, Cleveland Heights is a sweeper truck. There's a dirt truck that carries forty tons of dirt to correct their problem.
Good morning, brother. I, East Cleveland Council and everybody resident, my name is LaKia Smith. I'm from Brumford Road in East Cleveland. A lot of y'all wasn't at the new Democrat meeting, um, but they were talking about different things, the schooling and, um, how the new C E O of the school, but all in all, I have mentioned that, who turn around, y'all, not to y'all. But, uh, I mean, it's a good dress council, to council, okay. But it's still to council. I don't blame y'all for anything, you see them, I don't blame y'all. Everybody always saying council this, the mayor this, I'm blaming us residents, including myself. The reason why I'm saying I'm blaming the residents, because we have rights too. We could outbeat y'all for real, and these residents not understanding that. So they saying, oh, the council, the council, the mayor, the mayor, and because y'all getting into it with each other, they getting into it with one another because they not helping each other with this city, period. They about to take the city from us if we don't do the right things that we supposed to do as a residents, as a whole. So my thing is, to the residents, y'all need to come together. So that's including y'all too, because y'all, not just council, I don't include y'all as council, I include y'all as residents. Everybody need to come together before everybody get out of house and home because they don't have no problem with taking nothing from us, period. So the council, I don't blame y'all for anything. I apologize if I ever did have something to say about the council, but as I grew older and see, it's not the council, it's the residents. It's not the mayor, it's the residents.
My name is Farquhar Davis Junior, I live in one thirty-eight five five Superior Road. She's right. I, uh, I'm not a liar. I come up here, I come up here to be lying. I keep saying I ain't coming, but I keep telling you. My lady's right. I keep telling the mayor in here, I keep telling you, it's the children. Our children, not city all, not these stores, it's our children, just like when you was a kid. Who looked after you, who brought you up, who sends you to school, who taught you? We got to do the same thing for our children, the street, like he was saying, need to be clean. You know, come on. I won't pass that up, now, no, you need a, a paper for all the churches, all the stores, all of everything, so these people know what's in they city. You got a bunch of programs, nobody knowing nothing, nobody tells them nothing. Okay, agree with that. We got a garden, that's just, I ain't care. People are talking about our garden, pissed off, but we work hard at garden. Last year they took all our equipment, nobody helped us, we get our equipment back. We got people walking around talking about how bad the garden is. I know some people's black yard look like hell. You could have it, we fix our garden up, and every time we have a festival, who's there? What can we get? Come on, we're East Cleveland, we got the biggest garden, we're on the internet all over the country. We ain't going nowhere, you got that, President? We ain't going nowhere. Okay, we ain't going nowhere, but it's about our children.
Have you seen you a while?
Been a while since. Els Saunders, one forty-seven thirteen Shaw. I have several issues I need to bring to each. Our street is extremely black at night, we have about four lights or more, it's completely, two or three, and I know it's, the poles are gone, we blew them last year. It, you know, the, the address at one, they had a car accident last year, one forty-seven twelve Shaw, it was never replaced, it was totally taken off. And I think, uh, just to bring this to your attention, we have break-ins in garages. Mine was broken into this, uh, Monday past, a week ago, and I made a report on it. But if we have lights, that would more or less sort of concur the, uh, break-ins. And, and, and I, I think that, that would contribute to it as well though, but with it being dark and black at night like it is, it's, it's excess to those that are out there wondering why. Okay, I just wanted to bring this to someone's attention, I appreciate whatever you can do. Thank you.
Uh, so, things, one, the, the mayor has had a tone for the city. If what they're saying in reference to the police department, I feel myself cussing them out till we get to the, like, ass out of here, and I spoke back.
Police, you seen police talking to citizens like?
Yes, that's what I'm saying, no, you come on, come on, I'm saying, you, this is the problem. We, they, they have, you have sit here and approve nothing but coming in here with white. That's all over there. This police department and the fire department should reflect the city of the city. You can't find, go nowhere else than that, and then you holler, "Come on", that's what they are doing to people, uh, cussing them out. Nobody is doing, taking anything that's coming from the head. When the head told me, "Get the F out of here, uh, City Hall", so that's opening up for anyone else, you can't say crap to the people. And so we not gonna be disrespected like that, we not gonna be disrespected by the police or anyone else. Number two, as the boy articulated a few minutes ago in reference to, uh, the potholes or what have you, I mean, where they dig holes in the street, they are to put a, a, a metal plate over there. They doing it everywhere but it's in the city of East Cleveland because we accept anything. They can come in here, we accept anything. You are our representative, you was elected, so that's why we bringing it to you and you, uh, to take, uh, stand here and, and demand that the mayor do his due diligence to do, see these things are done, that's your job. I, 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 you can't refute that because I've been here, I know what your job entails. So you can't want to tell me what your job, uh, your job entails. Then you're gonna pass a, 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 a fine on people, uh, of the fire department, what have you. It has been, process of, it is a fine. You are taxing the citizen out of here, you are causing gentification, whether you want to hear it or not. You're causing everything you're going on the citizen, a hundred dollars to a unit, a hundred dollars this, or that, per unit, that's thousands of dollars to some people, or what have you. You're going, you're causing the gentification here. Now you want to go up here, uh, cause it's, I have fire inspector, we're always paying them, uh, uh, we've had fire inspectors before and they are, and crossed into the, uh, fire department. And so they go out, now you want to charge fifty dollars, and somebody said a hundred, going up to a hundred dollars. You are causing gentification, can you understand that? That's what you're doing, we are doing it to ourselves. We are causing this problem, we are taxing the people out of here, we won't be able to live here.
Thank you.
And you sit here and, and, and thinking, "Oh, we give them money to do this", we ain't doing nothing, what are our tax dollars going for?
Thank you, it's your time.
You won't have no tax, you tearing out everything, you're not filling anything or rehabbing anything. So you destroying the city yourself.
Thank you.
And that's your review.
Gladys Small, five one three three one nine Current Avenue, good evening, councilors.
Good evening.
And I want to congratulate you on your, uh, committee reports today, that was very detailed. That was very detailed on your committee, and that was good to hear. Uh, I wanted to, I didn't get the uh, I think they indicated where the parade will start. Uh, and uh, if you will repeat that, you know, when I finish like, make notes on it, because I had one thing and it seems that I heard something different from what I have documented. Go ahead. Oh, okay. Um, and also, uh, we have those funds that's in the special grant, special purpose grant. You said for over twenty years. Does that gain any interest? If it's been in the bank or wherever it's been for all those years, I'd like to answer to that question. Uh, also, uh, when we talked about the metal plates, maybe they can't put the metal plates down during work hours, because that's when people is working. But I can't see why they can't put the metal plates down on the weekends and on holidays, and that kind of stuff, in the roads and travel more often. And as far as the situation on Current Avenue, I have, I called the North East Seer District myself. I will contact them again, and I will send them the pictures. And let them know that one of their trucks did run into one of our citizens' automobile on the street that was coming up. And there is a police report to prove that. Um, the, the other thing, um, you know, I know, uh, being on council is a twenty-four seven job, I know that, from experience. Um, and I commend you for what you're doing, but I'm wondering, uh, posting of the agendas. Uh, it seems that I know, it's, I don't know if it's been what?
Leave whatever it is, we can
The only thing, the only other thing I have is um for the city of, for the mayor, I have a I'm sorry, I'm taking more time than I'm supposed to, I'm sure. But um, I want the person that's representing the mayor. I have a certificate of appreciation from EC Rose Community Garden. And we're grateful for all the help that we get from the city. Because I do call periodically and ask them to pick up our extra trash, and they do. You know, they do do that, the place, oh, this is, this is Judge Dawson. Because I have it for the police department and for the judge, because we do get a lot of help. And um, we've been there over twelve years. This is for the mayor. And I apologize for not having a frame, but we don't have a lot of funds to work with. But I do want to, I appreciate what the city does in order for us to exist.
Thank you so much.
My name is Dawn Johnson, from
Dawn Johnson. D A W.
Remember that seventeen, we wouldn't do like front end. Uh, first thing I wanted to comment about is the streets. Emily Street, we, they did, uh, Antonio from the service department did have a contractor come and fill up, fill up some of the potholes in the street. But there so many potholes still remaining. And it's, it's really taxing because I've had my rims cracked on my truck three times.
On the truck?
I have, I have an SUV. Uh, the manhole covers are at least two inches off the ground, and there's like it's, it's like a mine hill driving down that street, from Wheeler to uh, Superior. And it's just they need to rip up the whole street and just redo the whole street. That's just for Emily. On layfront, here's uh, they need a steel plate down, they waiting like two years to get the steel plate. It's almost practically in front of my house. So they need to, uh, they need to have that installed. Also, um, we're having trees removed, trees cut down. We have a contractor working on that, and I just wanted to ask uh, maybe somebody could follow up with I guess the city hall, Mike Smedley's office. Um, his price is seen excessive. I've had uh, the trees in my backyard, I had an estimate for seventeen hundred. And the contractor is at twenty-eight hundred.
Wow.
Yeah, so that's, and you know, for the amount of work that he's doing for the city, his price should be a lot lower.
Exactly, the more, yeah.
Exactly. So, and I wanted to know what the total contract was, because each neighborhood, I'm with Noah, group four. Each neighborhood has, uh, I think a cap of eighty-five hundred for the first phase and then the second phase, so I don't know if he's doing four groups. So that would be forty thousand for the first phase and another forty for the second phase, but that's, I'm leaving that up to you guys, okay? So we also have another contractor, Alco Exterminating, who they started doing exterminating with uh, the Groundhogs. We met with them like two months ago, and something happened at their company that their uh, well, their lead person is no longer there, and when I call, nobody answers the phone. So, they never came to do my house, I have like twenty ground hole, ground block holes in my backyard. And there's babies, you know, under the deck, and they're living next door at this, because the house next door is abandoned. So they're living under that porch. So we need to have somebody, you know, push this guy, you know. I have the telephone numbers if somebody wants to contact them.
What's the number?
Uh, two one six. Coleman, yes, we have a number. So also, uh
But you know what, read it out loud, just for the residents, just for, I give you like ten seconds just to read that.
Not, it's two one six nine zero four two two six two, or two one six two five five six nine three three. Uh, the first one is two one six nine zero four two two six two, or two one six two five five six nine three three.
Mrs. Coleman's number?
Yes, on his business phone. Okay, also I
I give you some, I only have one other person.
Go ahead.
No ma'am.
Okay. Um, I was just gonna ask, uh, my, my council person is not here, Shay. Uh, but I was trying to uh, collect money from the city, because I had paid for appraisals for properties that I wanted to purchase, and the city did not allow me to uh, purchase these properties. Uh, because I'm, I'm into beautifying the neighborhood, and I've been waiting since January of twenty eighteen, dealing with Mike Smedley. I'm beginning of the runaround ever since then. Uh, so lastly, they were telling me that the properties were never for sale. And I have emails proving that they were, and they're, they're on the, they're on the land bank list.
We're aware of that. We're aware of that situation, and not to interrupt you, as far as properties that are available, that are not, so.
Okay, so with the mayor, he checked out everything, he fact-checked everything that I told him in the past, he said he was gonna pay, and he still hasn't paid me. I called his office like over twenty-five times between February and March. Everything goes into the Shoretell uh, voicemail system. I can't even get the, get a human being to answer his phone.
Dr. Trisha Blahovey, I can't see ninety-four, Farmington. Um, last year we had a problem, there, there were demolitions and dust flying every which way, and demolition companies not doing what they're supposed to be doing as far as putting water on. This year, the, the same thing is happening. And I called the state, and I called the land bank, and I called the Cleveland Division of Air, and I called the mayor's office, and I nailed all of you. And I want everybody to know that this is an issue with lead. And if we're trying to uh, deal with the lead poisoning issue, we need to do this right. I mean, hey, there were two houses demolished on my house, on my street, that I don't think should be demolished. There were people who wanted them, and it would be cheaper to give them away than to what's happening now. Still, we've been trying to get one thirty four thirteen, Horse Till Avenue boarded up for about, I don't know, eight months, ten months, I don't know. Because it's very close proximity to Superior Elementary, and they could just go off the driveway, and they're in the back of this house, and kids aren't in and out of it, other people are in and out of it. It's a frame house, it's much less, um, it's much lower on my list of places I would like to see saved than anything else, but at least if it's not gonna be demolished. And I was told it was high on the list for the spring, then it should be boarded up. Somebody should do something. This house is an issue.
One thirty four.
Thirteen, Horse Till Avenue, it's a green frame house. But if they're gonna do demolitions, they need to do them right, and I'm sitting tired of complaining and complaining and complaining. And uh, nobody does say anything, nobody pays any attention. It's on my cellphone, I have videos of it, but my cellphone is now being stolen, so I no longer have the videos of them doing it wrong. But I remain furious.
Thank you. Great remark. I'm sorry, respond to council and mayor to the marks of the public. You like to respond, or have any response, or you just, I mean, that's a lot, I'm not gonna put it on you. But if there's anything you'd like to, or not, that's okay, we'll just leave it to the mayor.
Since you asked. First thing, to the gentleman in the rear. This is East Cleveland. And I certainly don't wanna condone any bad behavior on the part of the police department in terms of cursing out residents or anything like that. But in terms of responses, we have to keep in mind that they're getting calls on dead bodies, suicides, robberies. Folks acting crazy at the liquor store, robberies, shootings, murders. So you have to, when you think about, what am I calling the police for? You have to think, where does that rank? In terms of what they have to do, how high on the list is a vendor at your doorstep talking about you switching your gas? It's not gonna be real super high. In most cases, those things usually don't devolve into a situation where the police need to be called. So I have to wonder why it got to that point, because usually either you say you want it, or you don't, and they leave. But I don't know how it got to that point, but a tip. Um, there's a difference between no trespassing and no soliciting. And perhaps if you don't want vendors showing up at your door and knocking on it, perhaps you should have a sign that reads no soliciting. There's no trespassing.
No trespassing means no trespassing.
Excuse me, excuse me ma'am, I'm about to address that. But if I'm coming up to offer you a services, that is not automatically trespassing. At the point he says, you are no longer on my, need to be on my property, leave, now you are trespassing if you stay. But he's coming up for a lawful purpose. At the point where he says, I don't want it anymore, now you have a duty to leave. But I'm saying that there, if you don't want anybody knocking on your door to even do that, put up a no soliciting sign. That's clear. Don't even come up on my property for that. Next, when it comes to the licenses, the fire prevention licenses. Those, to my knowledge, are not for individual citizens or individual units. Those are going to be on businesses and apartment owners, and they're going to be either per address or per building. And that's going to be to help fund the police department, so they can get up their equipment, and they can get new trucks, and they can hire people. I can recall a time when another suburb had to donate an ambulance to the city, because the, the one they had here was so bad, they were piecing it together with duct tape. So the idea is to take something that was created in nineteen seventy, and forty years later, bring it up to where we are now. Think, you can't tell me the prices for things now are the same as they were in nineteen seventy. And we're only talking about a fifty dollar difference, and again, it's not per citizen or per unit, it's per building or per address. So that's the purpose of that. Um, Ms. McFoley, I, just so councilors aware, I spoke to her individually when she first brought that to our attention. And I'm glad to hear that you took by-bye till you went to court. No, 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 I never told you to go to the police. First of all, I'm
And I said I won't be back no more.
You said your piece. Okay, I got that part. And I didn't direct you to the police department, I directed you to the clerk's office.
Okay ma'am, ma'am, please, we're trying to keep order, this is just a question, if you disagree, we can have time after the meeting. Go ahead, ma'am.
So I'm saying is, some things are
If you listen to the entirety of what she's saying, it may address some of the concerns you have, and you can't just listen to the entirety of it, okay?
And as she recalls, she had a legitimate concern. Being locked out is a legitimate concern. And when you first uh, said that the building had changed hands, and they had not brought that to you all's attention, I agree with you then until there was some further discussion, or you got something in writing, that you should not pay your rent to people that you were not knowledgeable of. Initially.
Excuse me, please. Let the conversation outside.
I would like to
Excuse me, no, 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 no.
When we're, excuse me ma'am, Dr. Blahovey, at, when we're at the, there's the school board meetings, there's a certain way to order, correct?
Right.
There's a certain order, so it's no less different than at the council meetings, and I were asking that, that, excuse me, ma'am.
When I said, excuse me.
She was actually addressing the beginning, when she came in, if you'd like to make her name known, but she was addressed by the clerk of council. Dr. Blahovey at and off air, and she came late. So because you do not know who this individual is, she is a representative of the administration, and what I'm asking you to do is respect council. That's all I'm asking. And there's agenda, and we would not do this, we would not come to a school board meeting and do this. So I'd appreciate if you don't come here and excuse me, excuse me, excuse me, Ms. Blahovey, Dr. Blahovey.
My name is Heather Kyleen McCullough, I am the prosecutor and assistant law director for the city of East Cleveland. I believe I, uh, I was addressed early on, we were not here, but for the future reference, I'm the prosecutor and assistant law director. And when Willa Hemis, the law director, is not here, as she is not this week, I stand in her stead. So I'm here to represent the legal department and the administration. So I'm addressing a few of the matters that were discussed tonight, because they often come up to our office anyway. So, that's why I was addressing Ms. McFoley, who came up to our office about her issues. And I tried to help her out, even though as prosecutor, that's really not even my area, but sometimes I try to help the citizens with um, civil matters that I know about if I can. So I addressed her situation, I directed her to the clerk's office to file something concerning being unlawfully locked out of her apartment pending the eviction. So, she's saying she addressed that, I'm happy to hear. So I, I believe that was about all I had. I wanted to address the fire license issue, and I wanted to address the issue about the police, and one other thing, since it kept being brought up. We do not, I do not work for the police department, the police department does not work for the legal department. We do not run them, they do not run us. They are their entity, we work with them, but I cannot tell them what to do. I can advise them, they can come to me about getting warrants, getting charges, but we do not tell them what to do, so they are not my, the police department.
Councilman Austin?
Thank you, Madam President. I had a couple of notes from um, General Services at me, I asked you, I was um, reserve my word for the tire pickup, I'm gone. The administration has a, an agreement with the land bank to assist in the schooling of tires after demolition. If you have an excess amount of tires that are placed on the tree line after demolition, I have been working closely with the land bank to get those guys the specific address, timeline, number of tires available, so they send the appropriate um, sized vehicle to pick the tires up. Um, the agreement that the administration is working on with the land bank will allow our Um, the agreement that the administration is working on with the land bank will allow our service department, any spaces available, to pick those tires up and store them until the land bank is able to return those tires. And that helps us keep the community cleaner faster. So my number is two one six, three three eight, three zero seven one. After like a week of those tires having been picked up, I'll start calling the right person and hopefully the land bank will be more responsive to our needs and helping us keep our city clean as it pertains to demolition. Two one six, three three eight, three zero seven one. It's on my, on the council card that's available for every citizen in the city. Um, I do respond if you, um, send a concern, um, that I can assist with, I, I will. The pothole killer is actually making, making allowance now, it's not long in the shop, I've seen it on carloads, you know, doing some of the maintenance that's required. And it's my understanding that the pothole killer's solution, if you will, is a little bit more durable than the cold path that the service department is putting down. With the train company and the R T A, I don't know if, you know, if they're doing some vegetation cleanup and cleaning up around, you know, some of the over and underpass in the city that are lifting or committing up for doing those things on your own. You know, East Ohio, we, you know, so they should be working on installing some of these sidewalks they've torn up to assist us with recovering those pack faces that had to be rebuilt. So that's a, a good thing, and as a result of the recent increase with your property tax, that three hundred and thirty thousand dollars, they would not do additional maintenance with, now we've agreed to pay them, the additional funds they're actually coming out of some of these preventive maintenance on our, on our services, as they said, hundred, over a hundred years ago. We're placing some of the new catchments and installing some crosswalks and putting back the curbs that they've torn out. So, and, and if you wanna see some, in the central of the city, you can page that you can see some of those things repaired properly. Um, took a tour with the local developer, myself and the council president. There is some things in the works and there's been no agreements made, but there, the administration is working towards a East Cleveland we can all appreciate. Um, giving some developers opportunity to kind of present their, their pieces to the administration and see what, when they come out and keep some more to follow on that. There is some effort being made with some developers that makes things happen. Um, but the police, the police department concerns they contain. And if you don't officially, you know, write it down, talking does nothing, you actually have to formally make a complaint. Formally make your consent sign and all, with your, with something that can be recorded popping, not just talking, 'cause people are talking all the time. But you really want, actually you have to put it in writing and send it to the channel. You express apartments. Winning escrow, if you don't pay your rent to somebody that is due your rent, you have to put those things in escrow and make the money available. Then making every effort to do your part, respectfully, and, and business enough, and it's mandated, I'm just, if you do it, you're right way. More lights are available. Okay. Okay.
Yes, we are understanding, we are, excuse me, excuse me. No, there's procedures and policies and things that you need to follow, everybody doesn't like it, but one thing that we're not gonna do, and that's a whole, I would agree that all my com- my comrades would agree that we don't want. We want things to be ran orderly. And there's a way to, you know, submit your grievances and things that you do not like. It's called procedure, everybody has to follow it through, and that's what we mandate to our children and our grandchildren. That's what we expect out of the school system, so we need to be the change we wanna see.
Um, yes, and there is an agreement that the regional sewer district and other agencies, as they pass through our city, they will resurface these streets until they're finished all of the required infrastructure repair. And right now, the agreement is that the roads will be passable, I actually sat in a booth myself, they said, after we do our work, the roads will be passable. They're not agreeing to put down any additional safety precautions. However, if you pass by the area of tailer and mutilation, you'll see there is a metal plate that was required in that space. And ask and put that metal plate there, and it's there and everybody's driving right by it every day. So those areas where they could not repair or make patches, I will put it. Right. Yeah, they, they did take some precautions to make sure that we're at least safe. So more to follow on those areas that are.
Ugly.
Tape, yeah, there's a, a metal plate on the road, when you turn, yeah, you remember that? Right, so where, where they have to put those plates, they aren't installing those plates, however, based on the standard they presented when they began this work. They said it's gonna be multiple years and we're gonna make their roads passable until the point where they're complete and satisfied to actually resurface. So please have been with us as we, you know, identify those things that are up and signed, and they did agree to go by every Friday and do some, making the roads more passable, and I, everybody out there, at least even patched once or twice on every place where they left it wrong. So, um, more to follow, thank you very much, Madam President, I appreciate it.
Yes, I rise to speak. Uh, couple of things, right quickly, number one. It's time to have a police review board. And citizens, we can contact our clerk, we need to start working on that. So it's come up before, we need a police review board, demand to the police. The other thing I want, we need a letter, Dr. Guy, uh, we need to send a letter to the Northeast Ohio Sewer District. Because they have contractors doing this work out here, uh, you know, we need to see the letter that they need to do better in putting these metal plates down. Okay, like at night, 'cause if, we're kind of familiar with, 'cause we drive down Euclid all the time. But then I, I agree, it, I brought that up because it came up in health and safety. We, we, I complained about driving over these dirt roads and hitting potholes and tearing my car up, Ms. Johnson. So what I'm requesting, Council President, is that we, uh, we send a letter to North Ohio Sewer District saying it's unacceptable that these contractors, these subcontractors doing the work, not putting the metal down. Okay, that's part, and everybody in Kyle County paying for all this work they're doing, we are paying for it. So it's inexcusable for them not to do that, and they wouldn't do it in another community. And I agree with Ms. Blahoviet. When I was on Farmington, there was some, some beautiful houses, it was like mansions. They told us, I said, why would they tear the house down? I couldn't understand it, it's something, that's why my concerns with the land bank is, they need to be more open about, we, we're getting a list of what's being demolished, but some of the houses that they're tearing down is questionable. And Omay talks about gentrification. We're at the crossroads here in East Cleveland. Right at Lakeview, Euclid, they built Circle East. And those rents started twelve hundred dollars a month. Okay. Gentrification will, when they do the building, the buildings will be two thousand, twenty-five hundred. And that price is out of here. So we don't stick together, someone talked about La- Laquia, Laquia. Laquia, she talked, if we don't stick together, we're out of here. I think that the administration needs to be more open, I think when we address the, the, this, these roads and stuff, we, we dress to the mayor. They need, they need to do more, they need to be more proactive about the situation. 'Cause, uh, driving down Eu- uh, uh, in, in, uh, the service department, which they do great work, and it's only five of them, but our streets is a, is a monumental task, holes everywhere. I mean, Emily, oh, oh, there in Lakefront, when I ran around the city and, and seen the, Dr. Blahoviet, that's, it's, we have an awesome job to do before they get ready to pave Euclid Avenue, but in Omay's area and all that, it's, it's just, it's just potholes everywhere. So what, I, 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 I think the, the people need to come together. A few people come here, but they need to come together and, and, and get on us and on the administration about, we need to do better than what we're doing. Now, we're only a few, I think maybe two, three years from my estimate before, they come in here and they're gonna price us out of here. And you know what the paradox in the situation is, councilor, is that they're gonna build, they're talking about a supermarket, they'll do supermarkets, it'll be all kinds of stores, you wouldn't recognize it. Because they have to income, our situation's economics, and voting. If we're not voting, and Omay talks about it all the time, we're gonna become a village and paying taxes. A lot of us are not paying our taxes. So we have to do that. Or if you, you, you talk about the police, we've had such a change of police over, because we can't keep them, 'cause we can't pay what they deserve. We, I, I've looked at the police department, I've been here twenty-five years. And I can't recognize all of them now, 'cause, 'cause they, because they, they're, they're, they're good people. But we cannot pay them a fair wage, and the same thing with our fire department. We can't pay them what they deserve, okay? With that struggle, with our economic, with our tax base going diminished over the last twenty years, those are the issues we got. If we don't change our tax base, will we bring more income into the city? It's almost a hopeless situation. We're hanging on by, by the skin, skin, skin of our teeth to survive here. We're almost out of fiscal emergency, we're, we're in black, right, Brother Smith? Okay, so we, we, we got some major issues to do, and yet we all have a responsibility, like Ms. Johnson, to do our part. Clean up, every time I get up in the morning and I go to work, I'm picking up something and throwing it in the garbage. We have, we live here, but don't you not think that all of this confusion and, and, and and, and the darkness of the situation, East Cleveland is a gem. We have land and location, councilor. You can get off, so, right across the street, Winter Bear and Superior going anywhere in the world. Euclid, Route Twenty goes all the way to New York. So they want this, so they want us to fall down, we have to stick together. And this, by, and I close on this, we're gonna, I'm suggesting, I can't do it by myself. Come together, Irving, you can lead it, with a police review, you, you do more, excuse me? And all these things that need to be done, and come to the committee meetings where you can, where we have the dialogue. Our council president stresses that all the time, and, and our vice president, come to committee meetings, we can't do it by ourselves, in closing. We have, uh, we have a new CEO of the schools. And he has a, a, a remarkable plan, we can't do it by ourselves, look, neither can I, thank you, neither can we, thank you.
Thank you, Madam President, thank you to my colleagues, Madam Assistant Law Director. Thank you to our great clerk, Dr. Guy. Most importantly, as I say each and every week, each and every day, thank you to our residents, my neighbors. Uh, thank you for taking the time out to come see about your city. I'll be real brief today, I promise.
Can you do that, Smith?
Yeah, I, I will, I will, I just say, I'll, a lot of people, yeah, I, I keep it brief, um, I'm real disappointed about, I wish, look, she had a, I hope everything's all right with Ms. Blahoviet, she had an emergency, but she knows how I feel, I'm, I'm real disappointed about, about third and, um, we would not be sitting back idly by and taking that answer from the sewer district. About Euclid Avenue, yes, uh, well, about like two weeks ago, we had the meeting, when we, when we first brought it up, yes, they did make a few improvements, but those improvements are over as far as Euclid Avenue is concerned. I have in my notes, on, on my way here, I had to pull over and stop and write in my note, uh, in, in my notebook about right in front of the lodge you made on, uh, Euclid Avenue, I mean, you have vehicles going, have to switch lanes to get around, and it's, and it's, and it's unacceptable, and, um, it will be addressing, so I can just say this to the people, the people can also, uh, help us and help yourself address those issues, do not just depend on the elected officials. The same way a lot of you great, um, residents make calls, and I, I applaud you, and I thank you for that. Encourage your neighbors, um, to also make those calls, the, the more the merrier, um, I, like I said, I'm trying to go a little brief today, but that's why the, the federal, state, county government do us like they do us. That's why some of our own do us like they do us, 'cause a lot, a lot of times, a lot of us sit idly by and take it. I believe a lot of you know that me personally, I'm not gonna take it, I know my colleagues are not gonna take it, no matter what some of you say. As Omay say, our, our power is in the pen, but as some of you know, a lot of times, we, uh, like to get out there on those streets too, I don't care what you come in and saying, always trying to act like we're not up here doing what we doing. We, we do extra every day, and a lot of people who talk, we never see them. So, me personally, to my colleagues, you've been doing an excellent job keeping in touch with them. I'm giving them forty-eight hours, or I'm going back to my grassroots community days. And that's one of my partners right there, she know exactly what I mean, and, uh, be talking to you soon. Thank you, Madam President, thank you, uh, to my great neighbors, great people of East Cleveland. That concludes my report.
Thank you. I just wanna thank everybody for coming out, um, couple of things I wanna address, um, I know that a lot of times people will shift the blame, well, it's your fault, it's your fault, well, I'm gonna say it again, this is how it works, um, council appropriates and legislates. And we appropriate a budget for the administration to actually carry out certain things, tree cutting, grass cutting, the functionality of the city as a whole. Um, outside of literally forcing the mayor to go cut grass, or make him tear down a house. Um, we enforce through legislation, so it's good to have residents that are very aware, you are our eyes and, and ears a lot of the times. Um, unless you're in the capacity of being in the city, which I have the privilege of being. Um, so I just wanna make that clear, and I also wanted to emphasize again that before legislation hits the third and third, first and third Tuesday of a month. I've mandated and pretty asked, pretty much said that we're gonna stick by the charter and we're gonna take it through committees. And it's not gonna leave committee until the chair of committee is okay with it, as well as the rest of the committee members. And then it goes through first read, the gen- two or regender reviews, and then the third read, and then we vote. By that time, what would you say, six weeks to a basic piece of legislation? That's six weeks that residents have the opportunity to educate themselves as well. So when you come to a, a regular council meeting, we're willing to give more information, but at that time, it's business as usual. We talk about the city being taken from us. We have to also understand that council right now is undergoing, we're trying to do a charter review, we're codifying the ordinances. We're eliminating ordinances that are now, that are obsolete. We're trying to make sure that the city is marketable, not only for investors that wanna come in and, and look at it as a gem, but they wanna see that they have a city government, that's especially a council, that's trying to be about business, that's trying to do the right things. And I think all of the councils up here are, now, when you talk about things, um, if you wanna talk about getting involved, I have an organization where some of my people, S S, SOS Save Our Sons, actually Walt Milton Senior's the founder. Every Sunday, we clean up with youth, and hopefully we can get them involved with the school system and recruit. Um, all councils pretty much been out, correct? And, and helped out from time to time. But this is an opportunity to build community because you're cleaning up in different neighborhoods, and I was on Third Street actually Sunday. And we didn't clean up a lot, 'cause we had younger kids, but cleaning up is one of those avenues where, you know, it brings people outside that maybe wouldn't normally talk, um, or see each other, and then you have the youth involved, so I would ask anybody that would like to volunteer with us, or any kind of organization, or if you wanna create your own, own organization, um, that just helps to br- to bridge community. And then as far as the fire fees, um, and, and what we're trying to do. We've increased certain fees because we understand it takes money to make money. And certain things that we have currently on the books, it just doesn't, it's not fiscally sound, and when you talk about the police department as well, I mean, we are gonna have a lot of lawsuits, and so we're looking at the police department legislatively. And there's things that we can try and do to probably mitigate some of the problems, we know about the lawsuits that we have, and we understand, without trying to cause tension. So we are looking at those things, we had a police forum, I believe it was two years ago. Um, maybe we can have another one and address some of those concerns. But like my grandmother always said, the wheels adjust this kind of terms well. Um, and all of us, we are a community, it's not just us versus them, and, you know, um, I, I don't know why it seems like so unconceivable, why people can't understand that. I, I do appreciate your grievances into hearing what the problems are, but I always believe that there is a constructive way. And I believe that that's what we need to illustrate to everyone outside of East Cleveland. That no matter what problems we have, we still have a way to counter those problems constructively without erupting from inside out. Because part of the problem is, is that, like you said, we have to stick together, it starts with the community as a whole. And I mean, in two thousand nine, I believe the auditor at that time, or was it two thousand fourteen? Might have been two thousand nine, I read an article that said that East Cleveland would be insolvent in a year. Now we're in the black, we're no longer in the red. And it takes these creative type of, um, And it takes these creative type of, um, ideas that we have, and I think we can do better as far as being legislative and, and writing laws and, and being, and giving advice to the, the administration where we see different cuts that we could possibly make, and even, I'm gonna put it on record, we can revisit the budget. We can reappropriate, we have that power, and there's nothing wrong with it, we don't have to do everything like how business was you done usually in East Cleveland ten years ago, five years ago. So, um, that's a test that I'm, and you talk about the East Cleveland, um, police, what word you were saying? When we have a citizens advisory committee that we can start and, and, and allowing people to come more and having, having that, that sense of transparency. And I believe that's what we really want, even though we work as a body, we individually have our own core strengths. So I'm just gonna ask my closing say, I ask for your prayers and your positivity, that we can continue forward, it might not always be straight, but we're definitely trying to go forward, and so with that being said, can I get a motion?
I move that the meeting be adjourned.
I second that motion.